I'd like to begin by thanking, first of all, our Chairman Wayne Thompson, who is here as part of the council as well. Other members that are here with us, Mr. Victor Chariol with the Lenny's Day BIA, Tim Parker with Ripley's Entertainment, Kritsch D'Aloni with Americana Resort and Conference Center, Vince Barrow with, actually, I didn't know, with Club Mardi Gras, and Frank Lopendo with National. So thank you all for coming. As per your package, you'll see that our vision and mission remain the same.
Niagara Falls Tourism will be, by any measure, the best and most highly respected destination marketing organization in Canada. We're the official tourism marketing organization for the community of Niagara Falls, responsible for developing public and private sector programs that produce incremental visitor business, resulting in economic returns for the city, its residents, and the business community. Now, the presentation I'm about to give you is going to outline just how we impact this city, its residents, and the business community moving forward. What we do for our community: At Niagara Falls Tourism, we represent the city of Niagara Falls at tourism conventions, conferences, travel trade shows worldwide. We represent the best interests of our unique tourism industry at the provincial, which is the Ontario Tourism Marketing Partnership Corporation, and the Ontario Ministry of Tourism, and at the federal levels with the CTC and Industry Canada, CTC being the Canadian Tourism Commission. We advocate on behalf of our destination to both provincial and federal governments. For example, we were asked to make deputations on behalf of our industry to the Ontario Competitiveness Study that is being led by Mr. Sorbera on behalf of this industry. We are the stewards of the Niagara Falls brand worldwide. We are the protectors of that brand. There are no others that stand in the way of people taking that brand and doing things that we do not want to see out in the general population. We provide qualified, accurate information to transient visitors, group tour operators, meeting planners, corporations, government groups, using various sources, including the Internet, email, post, telephone, and mobile telephone services. We provide members, the media, and potential investors and developers with information on the tourism landscape, including forecasting growth potential. And that is a very important part of what I do in the given day, being that the potential investors do call us regardless of what industry they're looking at. It's the visitors that actually drive a lot of industry that comes into Niagara Falls. I made a presentation last year to this council and informed you there are a lot of infrastructure developments here in Niagara Falls that would not be here had it not been for that visitation. Eighty-three thousand people in a city does not constitute a huge megalopolis. However, we do have all of the amenities of such because of that. Most importantly, we develop and we execute marketing strategies to grow both day trip and overnight visitation to our destination. What do our members do for you? We are the only destination in all of Ontario, if not of Canada, whose gross domestic product numbers affect the gross domestic product numbers of the country. So in other words, if Niagara Falls goes down in tourism, the general coffers of Canada go down in tourism. That is how important we are to the overall infrastructure of the tourism landscape across the country. Direct GDP is $467 million from the tourism industry. That is direct to Niagara region. Indirect is $87.7 million. Induced is $111.6 million, for a total of $666.8 million in impact. Wages: The impact that we actually produce for the Niagara region, again, direct wage impact, $258 million in direct wages. Indirect is $59 million, and induced is $62 million, leaving us with $380 million that are in the Niagara region because of tourism. Those are people that can pay their taxes. They're people that go out and spend within the region. They spend everywhere throughout the city. So that money is generated by us, our industry. Next, the number of jobs. I love this slide because it tells us a really good story. Nine thousand direct jobs are created by tourism. Indirect are 1,300, and induced is 1,265, giving us 11,611 jobs in the tourism industry. You're going to see in a few more minutes how much that actually comes down to in dollars because I think that a lot of people have some misconceptions about the wages that people earn from tourism in this industry. Now, take that into comparison with the manufacturing. Manufacturing industry right now is at 2,700 jobs region-wide, down 13 percent. As much as all of us, and I'm sure that the economic development folks in the room will be able to tell you, as much as we all want manufacturing jobs, the reality is manufacturing jobs are drying up all across the world. Several of my colleagues and I were actually lucky enough to listen to a speaker who wrote an excellent book called "The Experience Economy", and in it they describe the fact that we are running from an industrial economy, from a service economy, and into an experiential economy. And that is one where people are only willing to pay for experiences. At first, industry was always important. It's what you could buy. As you move along in the spectrum of the economy and how it actually moves in the grand scheme of things, it goes from manufacturing an industry to service, and we are now in the throes of going into an experiential economy. It leaves us in a great position in Niagara Falls because we have a one-of-a-kind experience. The fact of the matter is, if you don't accept that fact and you don't invest in those kinds of industries that actually provide that kind of experience, you're going to be falling behind the curve. And that's where this committee can actually make a difference. The number of companies by sector: Owner/operators represent 159 of our 347 accommodation businesses in the Niagara region. You'll be happy to know, though, that that is not our number one. Our number one is 1,274 food and beverage. How many of you knew that we had 1,274 restaurants and food and beverage organizations in Niagara? Your choices are endless. You just have to make the choice. That is because we are a tourism sector. As far as taxes are concerned, direct taxes from the tourism industry, $271 million in the region alone. If you take that for indirect, it's $55 million in taxes that are from the tourism industry indirectly, and induced is $56 million. Provincially, $172 million go from the Niagara region into the provincial coffers. Locally, y'all get $10 million. $10 million in taxes come to this group, and we've never asked for that $10 million back. I'm not asking today either. Everybody's hair just curled. Moving on to where did the dollars come from, you'd be surprised to know that only 25 percent of the total spend goes to accommodation. The vast majority of the dollars that are spent by visitors to Niagara, vast majority, are spent on things to do, places to go. So we're looking at $218 million generated for accommodation, and 180 in food and beverage, 174 in recreation and entertainment, 167 in retail, and vehicle operations represent $47 million. So the percentages there don't lie. As much as everybody thinks that the hoteliers are the major beneficiaries of what tourism does, that is not the case. They do represent 25 percent and the highest percentage, but the most of the spending that comes from visitors are in fields other than hotels. So what else does Niagara Falls Tourism Industry do for Niagara? Niagara Falls Tourism Partners have donated and raised over $5 million, and that's just a number that I could come up with by going through Internet sites to find out where they've put their money. $5 million for various community groups throughout Niagara Falls, including Not Limited Too, Project Share, GNGH Foundation, The United Way, both Catholic and separate school boards, Cancer Research, Kidney Foundation, Boys and Girls Club. The list goes on and on. I would like to see how many manufacturing companies have given as much as the tourism industry has given to these charitable organizations. So here are the facts. For every dollar visitors to Niagara Falls spend, the city of Niagara Falls receives 2.2 cents with over $1 billion in direct economic impact. Tourism represents over 30 percent of the region's total workforce. Now, the vast majority of that comes to Niagara Falls. That's over 9,000 jobs. Remember that number. The average weekly wage for employees in the tourism sector in Niagara Falls is $552. Now, a lot of people do think that the wages are low in the tourism sector, and I would hazard to say that that is not the case. $552 can buy you a heck of a lot of stuff in this economy, and these are jobs that most of us are qualified for. The city of Niagara Falls collects an average of over $2,600 per room from each of our hotel members, and there are over 11,000 rooms in Niagara Falls. That's over $28 million, and that's in a bad year, in taxes, representing 22.5 percent of the total tax base. So our request, we are asking you to consider an increase this year. Last year, we received just under 1.4 percent of the dollars you collected from our members in taxes. This year, we're asking for an increase to 2 percent. We don't believe that that is an exorbitant amount of money to be asking, although I do understand the economic ramifications. So I will leave it to your great minds to figure out how to do it, but get it. Keep in mind, tourism is one of, if not the only, industry where the city of Niagara Falls is guaranteed, and I mean guaranteed, to receive a return on their investment. That means more roads paved. That means more snow removal equipment, more dollars for social support programs, more water and sewage, and in short, a better quality of life for our citizens. What would we spend the money on? Always important. The entire amount of money we're requesting will go toward much-needed resources and to offset additional administrative costs. Our organization lacks the funds to attract and retain the talent required to transition our organization from a leisure-based tourism icon that we are to the meetings and conventions leader we should and could be. We have raised membership fees and initiatives like our number-one-ranked Niagara Falls Tourism website, where we do generate a lot of revenue for us, and those dollars are earmarked for business we were created for: marketing the destination. We have been taking dollars that were used, are supposed to be used for marketing in order to offset the administrative costs of doing business for our organization. And in so doing, we've done a disservice to the city because we have not had the dollars allocated for the marketing where it should be. In these challenging times, we cannot afford to take any funds away from our marketing function, and doing so would without question negatively impact our already struggling economy. So with that, I'd like to open up if there are any questions from any of the members of the council.
Any questions or comments to Mrs. Pierce? Counselor Thompson?
If there are no questions, I would move it be referred to our final budget discussions and thank Anna for her presentation. And each year, we have such a presentation that really highlights the benefit of the tourist industry to this community. And I think when you seriously look at the jobs, the taxes, and what this industry does, we have to consider ourselves extremely fortunate that that actually exists in the city of Niagara Falls. And you know, we are going into our budget discussions with a great deal of concern. Everything we hear is doom and gloom about the future and the economy. And there is a slight increase in the budget. And what would you do if you were running a business and you were in this predicament today? You would be more aggressive in your marketing. You would do everything you can to get the word out there to address some of the concerns. We have a great opportunity right now with the exchange on the dollar, which we did not have this last summer. And in spite of that, it was not a disastrous year. So I'm happy to move the budget to final discussions, and hopefully there'll be support from the council.
Okay, I have a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by the Mayor, to move to final budget deliberations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to second the motion, and I wanted to speak to the presentation. I think that Mrs. Pierce has done an excellent job on behalf of the board and the members that she represents. I think this report truly indicates the significance that tourism plays not only in Niagara, but in the Niagara region, in Niagara Falls in particular. And I think it's important that we be cognizant of the challenges that they have before them. So I can appreciate the challenges that they've had to deal with, the restructuring as well, and the fact that there are challenges that are being faced by other major centers of tourism as well. So I think that we recognize in Niagara Falls the significance that tourism plays, and I just wanted to reconfirm the point that Mrs. Pierce made with respect to how much of our business activity is related to tourism. So I appreciate the point. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Selsey. Any other counselors have any comments? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, just one other thing I forgot to mention is the fact that usually the grant to the Tourism Bureau in the past has been on a dollar-for-dollar matching basis and utilized for administration. There are several hundreds of thousands of dollars raised annually through the membership itself for marketing, but the administration is usually utilized with the dollars through the municipality. This year, there has been an increase in the membership fees, and as a result, the membership will raise probably around $600,000 this year, which is substantially more than the request for council.
Do any other council members wish to make a comment?
I just have one comment, Mrs. Pierce. On the sheets that you gave us under the general administrative expenses, under the 2007, 2008 budget for public relations and sponsorships, you had $15,000, and then in 2008, 2009, it's at $200,000. And I'm wondering if there's new initiatives that you're going to take on in that regard?
There are two, actually. We have, every year, we're kind of brought into the fold with Ontario Tourism and the Canadian Tourism Commission, and every year, we've had to say, "Sorry, we don't have the funding." But this year, I felt it was extremely important that we take on two initiatives. The one is a sponsorship for the American Society of Association Executives, which is a very, very huge area where we can really fill that convention center if we have a little bit extra to show them and we give them a little bit more, these meeting planners, a little bit more to chew on. So this year, the ASAE is going to be in Toronto. We want to make a big splash, and we want to show them that we are ready to welcome meetings and conventions into Niagara Falls, and therefore, we are going to be sponsoring that event along with Tourism Toronto. The second is the Dare Tours in Germany right now. They are the number-one spending European country for tourism, and they happen to be our second-largest group coming into Niagara Falls. 750 of the top travel agencies are going to be welcomed into Toronto this year, and actually, they're here. They're actually coming in right now, and they are going to be touring around the entire province. In order for us to welcome them here in Niagara Falls and to make sure that they see all the product that we do have available, we had to buy in a sponsorship on that end as well. So on those two, and of course, they are one-time events, but we feel that we need to be a very strong presence in both, especially since it's in our backyard and we can really impress them with fam tours and that kind of thing.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Any other council members have any other comments? If not, there is a motion on the floor to refer to final budget deliberations. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next deputation was supposed to be from Niagara Falls District Airport. Unfortunately, they could not send anyone to make a formal presentation, so we do just need a motion to simply refer their presentation to final budget deliberations. Motion by the Mayor, seconded by Counselor Wing. Do I have any counselors that wish to make a comment? Counselor Wing?
Sure, I'll comment. I'm the council's representative to the airport commission. I'll just remind the council that it is a joint municipal services board that we own about one-third of the airport, and we own it along with the municipalities of Niagara and Lake and St. Catherine's. The commission has come a long way in the years I've been on the board. The group of people there now is just incredible. They are very, very talented, cohesive, dynamic. I mean, it's just probably one of the best boards I've ever seen. I'll remind council as well that earlier this year, you all received a copy of the Economic Impact Study that was done for the airport. It shows an $18 million economic impact on the region, which includes $6 million for Niagara Falls. So we not only own it, but we're getting some bang for our buck as well.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Wing. Is there any other counselors that wish to make a comment? None. There is a motion on the floor to refer to final budget deliberations. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, what are you going to be doing in the 2009 budget? Okay. Under item four, we have 2009 budget presentation, and I believe that we have Mr. Harrison that is... Sure? Yeah? Counselor Thompson is going to give counsel, a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we're going to be doing our first presentation on the 2009 operating budget. It's intended to be a general overview. As you know, we've been working diligently trying to pull together the numbers, and this is our first preliminary information to provide to committee on where our revenue projections are going. This is not finalized, obviously, but we still think it's pertinent to go in this time. Our revenue, our municipal revenue consists of four main categories, the first being non-tax revenues, the second, waste management, the third is payment and lose, and then, of course, taxation, which is our largest source of revenue. This chart indicates the percentages of each. Obviously, the taxes, including the general and urban service area, accounts for 47 percent of our revenues. The non-tax revenue, which is an accumulation of items, accounts for 34 percent. The payment and lose are 10, just under 11 percent. And the waste management, which is a service that the region provides, but we pay for it through our taxation, is 6.9 percent. So we're going to run through all four categories to kind of give you an indication of where we see things are going. The first area is the non-tax revenues, and these consist principally of five main areas: user fees, grants from other levels of government, other revenue, sales, and transfers from reserves. User fees. The trends we see in the user fees this year are we're going to have a difficult time in achieving some of the revenues and user fees. We have three principal methodologies of covering user fees. We have some, like building permit fees, and they propose new planning fees, legal fees, and some of the finance charges that are full-cost recovery. We have some other areas, particularly in ice rentals and burial fees, which are partial recovery, meaning we don't cover the whole cost of it. There are other areas we call sources that have no cost recovery. These are services that we provide for free, but they are cost. There is a cost to providing that. And one of the ones that is noticed would be the lack of fees in parks, playing fields. We've identified a few challenges moving forward in this area, as I indicated, and one of them is related to the risk of activity reduction. As the papers are full of, there is a lot of negative financial information that is out there. The climate of which we operate in now is declined, and unfortunately, we believe that this may transcend into some of the areas where we have user fees. We've seen in 2008 a slowing down or not achieving targets in some of the fees, which would include planning fees and committee of adjustment fees. And we see that trend probably continuing into 2009. Another area that has come to light in our review is that we've identified a policy in our arena rentals that is detrimental to our collection of revenues, and it has to do with the cancellation policy of ice time. Currently, we have a policy where the main user groups can return ice up to a 24-hour notice. In 2008, this was a significant challenge for us, and up to $80,000 worth of ice was returned, which we couldn't sell, which really impacts negatively our ability to achieve our revenue targets. So this is something we're going to look at. When we're looking at our opportunities, obviously, that last point is one that we would significantly look at, is a change in policy. As is not uncommon, we're facing increasing expenses, so we would expect to pass on some of those in increased user fees, particularly in the areas that we're talking about where we're not achieving a full-cost recovery. Obviously, in a municipal setting, it's not like a private business where we would be wanting a full-cost recovery for some of the services, but we are going to be reviewing to ensure that we have a blend between direct cost recovery and taxation subsidy. The third area, of course, is to take a look at those areas that we currently are not charging fees for, that perhaps we need to charge. The second major area of the non-tax revenue is the grants. And there's two trends, two main points that are coming out. A large portion of our funding in this area comes from the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund, which is a carryover from the previous Community Reinvestment Fund. Basically, the city of Niagara Falls receives $3.1 million in 2008. We project that we'll receive the same money in 2009. Originally, the province, when they did their review of services, their just recently alignment of the services, had indicated that the Municipal Partnership Fund may in fact be clawed back. We did receive word today, in fact, that this is not the case, that in 2009, those funds will be available, but that they are looking at it in the future. The other item is that, as you recall, in the summer, the premier announced that the province would be providing $3.9 million to the city of Niagara Falls for what they call the Investing Ontario Fund. It's to be used for infrastructure. We've received that money, and we had indicated that we would consider that in our budget deliberations. deliberate, deliberations, and as, as such, we will be considering the use of that money in our capital program. The challenges we face are, are with the Municipal Partnership Fund, is that we will be expecting a decline, a gradual decline, starting in 2010 and moving forwards. We've started to look at our multi-year budgeting and forecasting, and we see that this would be something we need to consider as we move forward. On the other hand, the province has indicated that they are continuing to look at this and will be reviewing how best they can do the transfer of services. As you may recall, they announced that there will be an upload of services at the regional level, and the flip side of that, originally how they had planned on, perhaps looking at, is, is in reductions, the OMPF funding. Since the city of Niagara Falls is not a beneficiary of the uploading, it's actually regional services that would be uploaded. If there was any decline into the lower tiers, we would be, in fact, paying for that transfer. And the province has recognized this, and they are looking at this, and that's why they've delayed in 2009 any reduction in this area. The other item, the Investing in Ontario grant, once again, that's dependent on provincial results. As I understand it, it is monies that are to be provided out of operating surpluses, and as you know, the Minister of Finance has recently announced that the province's finances have changed from where they were projecting a small surplus to, in fact, having a deficit. So, that could possibly have, have a problem for us in future years if we expect that So, we have opportunities to apply for new programs. Recently, in the paper, on the weekend, there was announcements by both the federals and the, federal government, the provincial government, that they were, they're considering new programs along the lines of Kinesian economic theory where they invest in, in downtimes, and our staffs are obviously eager to pursue any opportunities. One of those areas, obviously, is the Building Canada Fund, which we are progressing with an application for some funds there. The next major area that we have is in the sales area, and items that we have in that area would include the sale of diesel fuel and our transit repairs. We would include concession sales in the arenas, and obviously, there's plots in the cemetery, there's other items that we do sell in the cemetery services as well. The main challenges that we're facing in this area is there's a loss, as, as was, as the Director of Transportation Services had brought forth, there was a loss of the main transit customer. This has impacted us in our projections for 2009 in the sense that we will see a reduction in our diesel sales, and we will see a reduction in the activity in our, in our, in our garage. Of course, the sales would be offset with, offset by cost reductions as well, however, it is important to note that we are looking at that. In all of the areas, including the transit, you know, we are subject to activity risk. If, if the economy goes as, as some project, we could be facing activity declines, which could result in further eroding of these types of, of these types of revenues. Opportunities that we are currently pursuing is staff are continuing to look for new opportunities in sales through increased marketing. I know that our transportation division is, is putting an increased effort in marketing of the services that we provide to the, to the, to the bus companies that come into the city. I do know that we have a business plan that we've put together that's come to council in preliminary stages, and that, that includes some increased marketing activity. Also, too, there are things that we are selling that maybe we need to reevaluate the pricing strategy and, and take a harder look at what we sell things for in the, in any of the areas where we sell goods, particularly the, there's, there's an opportunity in the, in the cemetery area for that. The last two areas, of which provide significant revenues, again, are the other income area. In this, we have things like investment income, and we have the casinos' compensatory payment. We had identified that in the 2008 budget, that we believed that the, the agreement with the OLGC on the compensatory payment would, would actually trigger the next, next, would trigger an increase, actually, in 2008. Unfortunately, in rereading the agreement, we identified that the trigger doesn't happen until 2010, and in fact, there will be a reduction in 2009 from what we had planned in 2008 of $400,000. The second item that we identified is because of the decline in, in interest rates, we will see a decline in our investment income due to that. That impacts the general fund and also the, in the cemetery area where they have investments that are used to offset long-term care. The bottom item is the transfer from reserves, and we, two, two big areas here is we have a variety of reserves that we use to offset specific expenses. Particularly, we have reserves like a transfer from the reserve fund for WSIB or things like that, in that nature. These are specific items, we don't see those changing. But the one that is a large item to consider for this year is last year we had a, an operating surplus due to the significant assessment, supplemental assessments, we had an operating surplus, which we applied to this year's tax rate. And as you may recall, the tax, tax rate, in effect, the municipal act requires municipalities to use the previous year's surplus to offset the next year's tax rate. This year, we are not projecting that significant, it was two and a half million dollars. We don't, we don't anticipate seeing that this year, and so that is a challenge for us as well. So, when we look at summarizing our non-tax revenue, we are projecting a decline in the overall level of, of revenues in this area. We anticipate that, like I said, the, the reduction of the, the transfers from reserves. We, we think that there'll be a reduction in sales, which will be offset, again, by an expenditure reduction. We see a reduction in investment income, and we will also have to make, make allowance for the, the compensatory payment from the casino. All told, that's about three and a half million dollars, yeah, all told. The next main category that we're looking at is the waste management fee. As you may recall, the waste management services is provided by the region. It's basically an in and out, it's done on our, the regional services billed through our tax, our taxation, it's based on assessment. We're awaiting the regional cost to be established for 2009, and the tax rate would be established based on the, the cost of that service and the assessment that we have. It would be basically a direct charge. We don't see any enhancement to the revenue in that area unless we were wanting to build up reserves for future risk. Category three is our payment and lose. Category payments and lose are collected by the city on properties that are owned by other, other government entities, whether they be the federal government or their associated bodies, the provincial government and their associated entities, or the regional body. The largest one of these that we receive is the casino properties, and there are a variety of methods that we use. Some are assessment-related, some are fees, direct fees, they're prescribed in legislation, and some are by agreement. The challenges we face this year are that OLGC had done an assessment appeal back in 2003, and they, like other taxpayers, have filed a, a tax appeal because it's an assessment-based PIL every year since. The appeal has, was put behind the city of Windsor until the city of Windsor has settled a similar appeal with the OLGC, and that has been settled in 2008, the details of which we are not known at the time, at this time. We do anticipate, though, that now that Windsor has been settled, that we will be settling, getting into discussions with OLGC, MPAC, and that would be rectified in 2009. We are assuming that, that there will be a reduction in the assessment of the casinos. At the present time, it is not, we can't quantify, it would be, it would be disingenuous of me to, to guess what the dollar amount would be. Certainly, that would be open to discussions with MPAC and the OLGC in the normal course of proceedings. The fourth category is taxation, and as the chart at the very beginning showed, the taxes are 40, provide approximately 47% of revenue for all of the city operation. As you know, the city collects on behalf of the region and the school boards. There are, there are, it's a, it's a multifunctional type of, of service in the fact that the region establishes tax policy. They set the ratios between the property classes. The province of Ontario, on the other hand, establishes the tax legislation. As you well know, they have established the legislation with regards to capping and various other items. One thing that's interesting for this taxation year is that the province of Ontario has instituted a seniors' property rebate within the tax legislation. As you're aware, the city of Niagara Falls provides a grant to low-income seniors for both water and for sewer. The province has extended that to include low-income seniors that qualify through the actual property tax system. So, that'll be something for us to establish and, and take a look at when we set our tax rates. Lastly, MPAC provides the assessment expertise, and as you know, they've recently sent out all of the assessments as citywide. Here we are, the next point, getting close to the end. 2009 is an assessment year. The assessment information was mailed out in early November. There are new rules for 2009. There is a phase in of assessment increases over the, over the next four years for all property classes. As I alluded to earlier, there is still, the old, the capping rules are still in place for the, for commercial, multi-res and, and industrial classes, and now they've extended this phasing for all classes. Makes the calculation of the property tax bill very complicated, however, that is what they alluded to do. There are changes in the appeal process and, and their, and to the request for reconsideration. We have put together a, an information letter, it's on our website, but really, what they should be doing as well is linking with our, on, on our website is a link to MPAC and calling MPAC directly on the filing dates and that, but that information is available. One thing, one thing I should note before we do a calculation is that there will be year-end adjustments that still may occur for both assessment appeals or reconsiderations or errors or omissions to the, to the, to the, to the assessment that we received. Some preliminary information is, is that we've seen assessment growth. It's important to note that new assessment consists of two things: assessment growth, which is properties that have, have seen something new, i.e. a building has been put on, a piece of vacant land, or a piece of vacant land that was previously, maybe farmland has been developed and turned into residential, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, or then additions. These, this is new assessment growth, and we see that in 2008 for 2009, we had $58 million, or approximately three-quarters of 1% of new growth. By class, in the main categories, we see that the commercial sector had just under 0.7%. Residential, 1.12. We see a growth in the residential condo. We see declines in industrial and multi-res, which are consistent with the economic environment that we're seeing. The taxation impact based on this preliminary information is this, and once again, it's subject to final tax policy up at the region, and we need to get the final assessment figures adjusted for the year end. But the potential revenue increase due, due to the growth of the assessment is $285,000. The potential revenue increase due to reassessment alone is $1.6 million. So, to summarize, in our four main areas, we see that non-tax revenue is declining. We see that the PIL revenue, there's a possibility, a very strong possibility that we'll be facing a reduction in 2009. We see that the waste management revenue is neutral, and we see that taxation revenues, there is a slight growth already built in, and then we have to determine on our reassessment growth. That's the end of the presentation, Mr. Chair. Certainly, staff will take any questions.
I know that Mr. Burden wants to, wants to kind of add his summary as well to the presentation, so I'll ask Mr. Burden.
Through the chair, we have Mr. Harrison taking into these comments. One of the things that we wanted to see from tonight's meeting is perhaps some clear direction, if not perhaps some motion in principle at least, with regards to just the revenue side of the ledger. There's four key areas that Mr. Harrison's talked about tonight, and the first one, of course, is on everybody's mind, is what do we do with reassessment? And of course, the growth in real assessment. Certainly, the growth in real assessment can be realized by maintaining the tax rate as we currently know it. And the reassessment, too, could be realized just by simply doing the same thing, maintaining the tax rate. Now, we don't know the actual end sum because we are reading on the region, but do we hope that the committee would seriously consider utilizing the reassessment over the four years? That represents roughly a 17% increase in levy over the next four years, and you heard Mr. Harrison talk about a multi-year plan. That is exactly what staff is looking at. Some of the challenges that we're facing today can only be solved over a series of years, so we're asking committee to seriously consider using reassessment over the next four years. The second one, of course, is cancellation policy for rentals. We have suffered significant losses in 2008. I believe the sum is estimated at $80,000 rental money that we could have collected if we were quick enough to have actually had a cancellation policy. Also, we are looking at increased fees. This is a need, as you saw, that our user fees are declining. There are specific areas that we'd like to target, such as the burial fees in our cemeteries, the planning fees, which we've already talked about and will be having a public meeting on, and also transit fares, as we've talked about the business plan for transit. And the final area is new fees, new fees for users of city facilities and services. We must be sensitive to our users in this regard, and we want to do this in a way that makes good business sense and is, we do this during the four years to our users. Those are the four areas, the use of property reassessment, cancellation policy, potential increase fees in great terms, and new fees for city facilities and services.
If there are any questions or comments, Mr. Burden, councillor carrier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ken, could you explain what type of a change you'd make to the, or you would anticipate we would make to the cancellation policy that would change things?
Through the chair, we have been working
Through the chair, we have been working on this, and our director of Parks Recreation and Division.
Through the chair, we're currently working on a report, which we anticipate bringing back to you on the first of December. Staff have reviewed the cancellation of ICE policies in many other municipalities, where there's far more of a window in terms of that ICE being what we call in the industry "turned back." As Mr. Harrison advised, it's about eighty-thousand dollars for special events and tournaments. In addition, we're currently statting, and we're losing an average of twenty hours a week of youth prime. Sometimes that, that ICE is turned back. For example, this week, fourteen hours, we're turned back by one organization, and we're estimating that cost to us in two thousand and eight is about sixty-four thousand dollars. So a ICE allocation policy and a cancellation policy is twofold. It rationalizes the booking, so you don't take what you don't need, and it also allows a very responsible cancellation, thereby if you're giving thirty days or sixty days notice, the ability to remarket that ICE or minimize your operating costs are also twofold. And internally, we compared it to hotels, for example, that would actually take bookings on credit cards, and probably if their notice wasn't adequate, wouldn't allow that cancellation to take place, because they wouldn't redeploy those rooms. So we thought it was very responsible. We thought the users would respond to it as well, because then they would only validate and utilize what they truly can use and may not take as much ICE with the inability to say, turn it back with twenty-four hours' notice.
So we are conferring with our user groups, so that they have some input in policy?
Through the, through the chair, our plan at this point, through Mr. Burden, was to get council's direction that you wanted us to review this, bring back to you a policy for approval, and part of the implementation of that would be the consultation to make the user groups aware of it, based on a fiscal, financial policy and responsibility.
Okay, Counselor Thompson.
Yes, sir. All the things that have to be discussed prior to the budget have to be, I think, the changes that we should make. The fact that this is going to be a, a form of, over the next period of time, there's a direction.
Through the chair, we have another presentation coming, which will focus on expenditures. As each of these motions are debated and perhaps approved by the committee, staff will come out with a detailed explanation of what the cancellation policy might mean, what increases in user fees would be presented to you, considering what new user fees, but that would be a separate presentation.
Getting all of this back in the next, as far as I'm concerned, the cancellation policy is a no-brainer. You miss an appointment at a dentist or a doctor, you pay for it, and I don't, especially a twenty-four-hour period is impossible to, to deal with that. However, I think that when you're coming to some of the user pay facilities, I think the key element there is to be talking with the user groups. I've always been reluctant to start charging for playing fields and parks and whatever throughout the community, and I think that's a major step when we start doing that. However, I do believe we're charging for the new soccer surface that's out off of Kala Road. Mr. Harrison is gone, but the reduction, well, he's here, but he was over here before. Reduction, the four-hundred-dollar, four-hundred-thousand-dollar reduction for two-oh-nine, what's that from in your presentation?
The compensatory payment with the casinos. When we had done, put together the two thousand and eight budget, we believed that the, the agreement with, that we had with O L G on the two-point, the two-point-six million would actually, it would ratchet up to three million dollars. As the year went, as the year went on, we, we went back to the casino and said, you haven't raised your monthly allotment, and they said, you're incorrect, it doesn't happen this year. And so we, it, it's the, it'll be in two thousand and ten, actually.
Well, that's two, two-point-six to three million.
In two thousand.
What was the time period there?
It'll be.
Seven?
Pardon?
How many years?
I, I, it was, it came into effect the year that the original casino was open, and it was a ten-year agreement, I believe. And so that's why it came in.
And it would be fully implemented in two thousand and ten.
We haven't, we haven't had any information on the assessment appeal with the casino. Is that, where does that stand now? Is there any, any information that you could have brought to council? I keep hearing about this and.
No, at, at the present time.
Transparency policy doesn't seem to be what it's supposed to be.
Well, certainly, at, at the present time, nothing has happened. There was meetings at early part of the year, the, the other bodies that are involved, including M P A C, including the province, including O L G C, it was, because it was in front of the Assessment Review Board, it, it was, the, the Windsor situation was dealt with first. And so as a result, we, we were put behind the Windsor situation. Now that I understand that the Windsor situation has been rectified, our, ours, it'll be, it'll be now at the top of the list to deal with. There has not been any other meetings or anything to bring back to council. We are just making you aware that we believe that in two thousand and nine, that this will be brought to council for a, a decision, and that we would be, and the impact of that would be in two thousand and nine.
Do you have anything, whether you have no knowledge of Windsor's agreement?
If I might help there, Counselor. Windsor, I have been in touch with the city solicitor of Windsor as soon as I heard that there was a settlement.
They have signed all kinds of massive non-disclosures against hotels and, and what they, the other, I don't know, doesn't best apply information freely, but they're, they're sealed up there. Anyway, basically.
It's sealed up. They're not going to tell us anything. The earliest we'll learn anything concrete will probably be when the, if it's actually the assessment number itself is disclosed in the two thousand and nine assessment rule. But until then, there, we have absolutely no information as to how they determine it and what they.
Sears, can they go back, if they go back?
I believe what you've got, we're on here, we're having a conversation. The other thing I came to the fore is that the current status of the act of litigation as we're here, is that M P A C is still not actually delivered.
For its assessment, and I just sent them a bunch of information last week outlining various aspects of one of the casino properties, its zoning and that sort of.
So from the original agreement with the casino, we seem to be falling back from what we agreed to originally. Maybe the mayor can bring us up to date. He was going to get ten million dollars a year off of the casino. Maybe he can bring us up to date how we're doing with that.
Do I have any other comments from any other members of council? Counselor Diodati?
Comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Wait, I'm sorry, just on that point, Mayor, do you wish to comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to that comment, of course, the, the comment that the former mayor makes and Counselor Thompson is correct, that we are trying to get the ten-million-dollar value increase to that point, but we find ourselves fighting for two casinos alone, Mr. Chairman, which I think is very obvious to everybody here. As you know, there was a move by the, the government to, to consider closing Casino Niagara as it was originally planned. I think we are successful in keeping that open. So in lieu of that, we were fortunate enough to keep two casinos and keep five thousand jobs intact at both locations.
Yep. The former premier, going back after the two-oh-three election, made a commitment then there would be two casinos, and this is just jockeying for position. We're going to have two casinos. We always were going to have two casinos. It's just where it's going to be located.
I have Counselor Diodati that wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I just wanted to direct my comment to the cancellation policy to staff. I think that's a great move. It's a great initiative and direction. I'm glad we're, we're identifying new opportunities through efficiencies, similar to finding leaking pipes and whatnot. And I think this is going to be a good way for us to become more efficient, time to cut out the fat. And I can't think of any better time than the present for, for taking these types of initiatives. So staff would be commended for that. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other comments? Mayor Salsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge the efforts of Mr. Harrison and his staff in preparation of the revenue overviews. And I wanted to clarify, for the sake of the residents, the taxation impact for two thousand and nine, in particular, the revenue increase due to growth and related assessment of two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand. Many people stop me and ask why, with all the construction we've had in last year, I think we had a record amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-nine million dollars in building permits, as to why we haven't had greater revenues. And I think when you look at it and look in the, the true figures of the two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand, which I believe is a net figure, when you look at the overall dollars that we receive in percentage of total, I think that, that the two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand is certainly quite telling. So the question I have through the chairs to Mr. Harrison, just to confirm what percentage on the average that taxpayers pay that we actually keep in the state of Niagara Falls.
Do you think, do I have any other counselors that wish to make comments? Oh, sorry, Mr. Harrison?
The all-in rate when someone pays, okay, it depends, again, on the different class, because the education portion is different for education or for industrial properties, and it's different, again, for the other, for the commercial sector. But in general, as a real barometer, with all of the taxes in, including the waste management, because that's how we've calculated, it's approximately thirty-two percent that of their total tax bill stays for city services. The other sixty-eight percent go to the region and to the school boards.
Mayor Salsi?
So, Mr. Chair, that was the point of my exercise in the question I asked, was that to confirm that when we deal with the dollar, it really is thirty-two cents to the city in a net figure. So just, just as long as the, the taxpayer understands how their dollar is divided, I think that's important to note, so that we are trying to be responsible and doing what we can with the, with revenue we have. So I appreciate the, the fact that we could distinguish the difference between the total dollar and the actual working dollars that we have here in the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other counselors that wish to speak?
Seeing none, then staff is asking to look at four different areas, one being reassessment and holding the, I guess, increase in the M P A C assessments for the next four years, cancellation policy for rentals of various city facilities, increasing different user fees, and also adding new fees. This is what staff is asking, I guess, to investigate, and then future reports will come back to council, so.
Mayor Salsi?
Well, Mr. Chair, I feel uncomfortable in, in setting the pace for a seventeen percent increase over the next three to four years. I think that that has to be done on a year-by-year basis, and just to take the assessed, the, the change in assessment and add the same tax rate may not be fair to the taxpayer, because it's what comes out of the taxpayer's pocket that we're concerned about. So I don't think that that's fair, and I think that staff should be directed to look at the, the increase based upon what the true necessity is in terms of the, of the cost of the, of the budget items. I think we've got to go back and direct staff to, to review their budgets internally and come back with some figures that would reflect different checkpoints as far as increases or no increases go. So I think it's unfair to us as council at this point just to say, well, we'll work with the increase in the assessed value over four years, which we know is seventeen percent, and automatically work towards that seventeen percent increase. I think we've seen some municipalities last year, the town of Fort Erie, I think, increased something like sixteen percent or seventeen percent. When it was combined with the, with the regional rate, it came down to like ten-point-nine, nine percent is the effective rate to the Fort Erie taxpayers. We didn't choose to go that route. So I, I still think that we've got to hold our budgets intact and be responsible in our increases and our approach without going on a blanket basis.
I wouldn't disagree with your statement. I think that we'd be actually sending the wrong message to the residents if we were even to investigate the possibility of holding all of the income from the increased assessment back. But I know that Mr. Burden would like to make a comment on that.
Through the chair, our challenge tonight is the loss of non-tax revenues. And as Mr. Harrison explained, we are facing a deficit in those particular areas. We will bridge the gap over a series of years. It won't happen immediately. For example, the cancellation policy, even if it were approved tonight, you couldn't effectively implement it until the next season, so to speak. That's unfair to the groups to draw something on them at this late in time. Another area is user fees. As indicated, you would have to consult with who those users are and ensure that they are fairly heard in the institution of new user fees, as well as existing user fees. We talked about cemetery burial fees. That has an impact on the industry. We need to consult with our business board in, in that particular area. My point is that if you decide not to give direction on using the reassessment, then the direction to staff is to maintain the existing tax levy. And we're pleased to do that. You will be brought back. Future information on how the budget progress is making would be understanding that the existing tax levy will remain the same until you decide otherwise, and that's fine with us.
Okay, do I have any other questions or comments from council members? Counselor Thompson?
Well, I'm, I'm surprised that we haven't sent the message out if there is a crisis with respect to this coming budget year, why we haven't established some parameters for some of the departments. We should have done it certainly for the grant requests. It was always done in the past, and we've always, if we saw that there was going to be a deficit or a problem, we've always put the brakes on two or three months before. It's almost too late now to all of the departments to slow down and stop spending. I was horrified the other day to hear that somebody at another level of government was rushing through, buying all kinds of cell phones and other things to get rid of the, an additional fifty thousand dollars in their budget before the end of the year. That goes on all the time, and hopefully, it's not happening here. But if you're going to have a difficult time with the budget, we should be putting the brakes on, and we should have been doing it for some time. We've known about the economy and what's happening right now. We're no different than any other level of government, and we're going to be suffering the same way. But if you don't give direction and some guidelines, how do you expect to control it? You had, how much did you have as a surplus last year?
Through the chair, the oh-seven surplus was two-point-five million.
You had, so you.
It was the result of a large supplemental revenue for one of the properties, which represented several years of taxes.
So you're not going to have two-point-five million on top of that going into the next year, so I'd be putting the brakes on, boys.
Personally, I don't necessarily disagree with you, Counselor Thompson. I think that the presentation here tonight focused on revenues, and we haven't had a chance to look at the expenses yet. Quite frankly, I appreciated the way that staff outlined last year what was a high priority, what was a medium priority, and what was a low priority, or what should be to the council, so that we can look at actually curbing some of our expenses for two thousand and nine. And personally, I hope that staff actually does that again for this year.
Through the chair, that is the full intention of staff, but that was really focused on the capital budget, not necessarily the operating. We would be pleased to apply the same criteria that was given.
Seeing that we're not going to have staff look at the reassessment values and holding the misses, there, there were three other points in the presentation that they would like direction from council to look at. One was the cancellation policy for rentals. The second was the increased user fees, and third was new fees. Mayor Salsi?
I make a motion that staff report back to this council with respect to the three areas of concern you just outlined, to give us some indication as to the revenues that could be generated from those areas. Thank you.
Do I have a second after that?
I don't even think we need a motion. This is a normal practice of doing business. Naturally, we'd expect reports on all of these things. I don't know what you need a motion for.
Seconding the motion?
Seconded by Counselor Diodati. Okay, I just want to ask the mover, would you also like to recommend that, that staff, when they bring back their report on expenses, basically list their expenses as high, medium, and low priority?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Is that okay? Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Vote. Motion's carried, thank you. I have Mr. Burden, does he wish to make another comment?
Similar vein with regards to taxation levy, we respectfully request some indication as to whether or not the committee will be indicating the idea of any increase in the taxation levy, regardless of reassessment, regardless of growth. Regardless of reassessment, regardless of growth in assessment, if we are at X amount of levy for the 2008 year, will you be indicating to us that you would be favorable towards some kind of increase in the tax levy itself?
I have Counselor Fisher first, and then Counselor Carrion and Maves.
Right along, I have told, said, "No increase," and I stick with that.
Thank you. Counselor Carrion.
I feel the same way. I'd like to see us with no increase. I don't know if it's possible or not, but I think it's too early to tell, Ken. I think we need to see everything. We need to see the whole picture, your expenses. We need to see where there's places where we could trim or you could trim. Right now, it looks like everyone that comes to us, we're putting it forward to budget discussions, almost encouraging them to think that they're going to get what they ask for. I think we've got to get on with it, get down to the nitty-gritty and get into the budget discussions that count, so we can make that decision. It's too early to tell.
Counselor Maves.
I was under the impression that our levy should go down because of the assessment was up so high, so I thought there was going to be some sort of a saw off somewhere in there. So I'm not exactly sure, and I think probably we're going to have to look at these figures when we do the final deliberations, and everybody submits their figures for the final budget. So I think it's premature to do anything along these lines anyway, until we see the final numbers.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ring.
Just to reflect the last two comments, yes, I think it's too early. However, I'd like to see that be an objective, that we don't do an increase this year. I think it's really important with the economic times we're heading into. We want to try and keep our industry alive.
Okay, thank you. Under 2009 funding requests in additions to council, we also had a request from the Downtown BIA for 2009 events. I know that council did give the Downtown BIA monies in 2008 for their festivals. However, these monies came out of the CIP, and I also believe that there's a report coming, and I know that Mr. Iarafida wanted to just quickly update council.
Yeah, through the chair, exactly, last year, if you recall, the Downtown approached council in the spring when they were starting their event schedule, and we didn't obviously have a specific category for funding of those events, and it was taken from the CIP. Staff doesn't feel that it's appropriate that those monies continue to be taken from the CIP, which is obviously for facade building improvement, grants and loans, et cetera. So we asked the Downtown to submit a formal request, since this is really a permissive grant in a sense, so they have requested $100,000 for events for 2009. We will be coming back to council with sort of a year-end wrap-up on the Downtown CIP events, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, I would -- or two final budget discussions.
A motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrion to refer the request of final budget deliberations. Questions or comments? All in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Is there any new business for committee? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you. Thanks, Counsel.